Hey, you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna kick off. We're gonna kick off. We've got, got a lot to cover. I'm worried about time and, and energy and stress. If there are tech issues, throw it in chat, because I don't know. I'm not, I don't have all my windows in front of me like, like I normally would. And I will ask this, I will probably, you know, my screens aren't going to, are going to be covered. And so I'm just a disclaimer up here. I am so excited about this meeting and I hate them putting disclaimers. I probably won't see chat as much as I would like. And so some of my leadership and some of the people in there that, that know what's going on, if questions come up, feel free to answer them in chat or, you know, throw a, you know, a pin at me or something to get, get my attention and not at your camera. That would be bad. Maybe at the screen if you want to throw it at the screen. No, I'm kidding. But just like drop it in chat and we'll work through it. But, but we, we the Church Digital have been, yeah. Flatcap is going to be the question answerer for everything. He, he is, he is the, the man that's going to take care of it. It's going to be great. Uh, he's going to solve all the world's problems with his keyboard. It's going to be so good. Hey, you know what? We wanted to get together. We wanted to do a town meeting, a town hall meeting, an old fashioned town hall meeting on Discord. Whoever would have heard or thought of such a thing, but you know, we're at the Church Digital, we're, we're mixing it up here. We, we got, we got an old method of, of doing something. A town hall meeting to, to get input to you, to, to, to talk about some changes and some things, but we want to hear from you. So we're doing an old fashioned method. A town hall meeting, but we're doing it in Discord because Discord has been our community, our place. And we are, I am so excited about what Discord has been and what this community has meant and, and has evolved into in a relatively short amount of time. Four months, five months since the, the time that, that we launched this and already 400 plus people, massive engagement. Such a incredible shift away from that other platform. I don't remember what it was Mighty Networks that we used to be on. Mighty Networks and that we should never speak of again Mighty Networks, but Discord has been awesome for us. And we're excited about that. But here with, here with this town hall meeting, to be honest, we're going to work through some new versions of the Church Digital. Cause what I'm about to announce today is, is, is the ninth version. We'll get into this. It's the ninth version of the Church Digital. So I, I just want to ask you guys, throw this in chat. Let's engage here a little bit. When or where or how, how did you first hear about the Church Digital? Like Jeff showed up at a conference. I found you on Google, some YouTube thing. Uh, I've known Jeff for 35 years. Whatever the answer is, throw it in there. Where did you first hear, I, you know, JMo wrote something and, and it published on social media. Like, how did you first hear about the Church Digital? Uh, we're going to give away a prize. Uh, I got invites from Twitch pastors. Okay. So I'm going to give away a prize to the best answer. And of course I'm going to be the judge here. So make your answer good. We've got a prize set for the person. Found the TCD podcast. Really? TCD podcast was, was the way you keep connected. That's, Ian, I don't think I realized that. Facebook. That's interesting. Uh, social media post, Stacy, like what, what went on Facebook? A, a live stream? Just kind of curious. Uh, Evangel, what, what did, how did you hear about this? Sumi Beats, CI, Church IT Network? Yeah. So that was a, a conference. Man, I'm, I'm trying to think a, a year on that. That might have, that was pre-COVID, I think. You must, because I knew, I knew, met you early in COVID. Uh, Angela Craig's Online Jesus. Yeah. I did a lot through, uh, through Angela. I miss Angela Craig. I was, was talking about her the other day with some friends. Um, she, uh, she, yeah, she was so good in the space. She's doing, she's doing really good work in academia now. Like her heart was always academia and, and seeing that. You guys at Expo, Expo 22, that, that was a good answer. As well. You know what? I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to give it to, uh, any mini mighty Mo. We're going to give it to, uh, to Evangel. Here's what, here's the prize. Uh, I'm giving you a blockhead. We, we will create for Evangel. Uh, one of the eight big characters. JMo's got his as an icon. Flatcaps got his as an icon. You will get, you should be so excited for this. You will get your own official TCD blockhead, uh, that we will give to you. You can of course optionally use it however you want. But you know what? These are like super, these are worth like two, $3 million because not anybody can, can get one of these blockheads. You have to be somebody special. These are like, and I don't, I didn't realize this when, when I got mine. These are like handcrafted, individually pixelized blockheads. Like they literally program pixel by pixel, what color it is to make the blockhead. And, and so we'll be getting in touch with you Evangel. Somebody write that down Evangel and, and that is, uh, that's the winner, or at least one of the winners of, of that with this conversation today. But as I said, let's get into the meat of this. We are rolling out version nine of, of the Church Digital. And it's, I'm excited about this. We, oh, over the years, we've tried a lot of different shoes, trying to find the perfect shoe, the perfect fit. You know, I've made some jokes historically about this being, um, you know, the, the, um, the Cinderella trying to find the glass slipper and Cinderella, you know, I don't necessarily, did you have that like queued up lately? Cause you, you really dropped that very quickly into, into chat. That was eerie. I think you've heard this talk from me before. Uh, but you, you've, this glass slipper, and to be honest, glass slipper works with Cinderella, but, but my feet are kind of like nasty looking. And so we just decided to go with the sneakers and, and our desire is to really find the right fit. Um, here's the problem. Over the years, we, we've tried different things and, and some stuff worked and some stuff didn't. Like, you know, I bought the domain name at, actually at a push pick conference in 2018. February 9th, I was literally in the middle of the booth, listening to Seth Goden actually speak and on my iPad with 4G or 5G LTE, whatever was at the time, I bought the domain name, thechurch.digital. No idea why, but just felt like God was leading me to do something different to help churches understand digital. May, uh, we, I, I launched the website. I resigned from, from Christ Fellowship and we were doing everything under the sun. Then there's this physical digital, we're pushing online groups. I started an AVL business that was complimentary. We did Fidgel. We started talking planting. COVID happened and we went, you know, Fidgel all over the place, stayed at church planting, new thing network, digital church network. Um, leadership network exponential. Like you guys have known the, the partners and the organizations that we really have worked with. Uh, to bring us to this point where we are today. We're doing digital church network. We're not doing digital church network. We're launching uh, TCD integrations as a separate, as a separate business. And there's even greater things, even more things to come in store. Uh, but today, really September 12th, today is the 12th, right? Today's the 12th. Uh, yesterday was 9/11. Today, uh, I'm announcing officially publicly for the first time, what version nine, and, and I'm hoping the glass slipper or the glass sneaker in this situation. The Church Digital is becoming a digital missions sending agency, a digital missions sending agency. That's a lot of words and, and some of that may not make sense for you all, but let's start to work through this and, and see what a sending agency is and how the Church Digital is going to help organizations like you. Keep me in the loop with the buffers again and, and I'll do what I can. Let's back up and let's just say, number one, what is a digital missionary? If we're a digital mission sending agency, let's talk about what a digital missionary is. Alright, so digital missionaries, they can be digital evangelists, people that are, are sharing Jesus via social media or via virtual reality, people that are very intent on discipling, helping people grow deeper in their faith and, and using digital methods. Uh, like a WhatsApp or Slack or Discord or Facebook groups. You've got church planters, people that are planting churches in digital platforms or in social media groups or on, uh, in, in Discord or in virtual reality. You've got community builders, people that are building community, interactive relational community, using whatever platforms they can get on. You've got influencers that have got millions of people. You've got influencers of like four people, because everybody's got influence. You've got futurists, people that are dreaming of what the future of the church is. You've got programmers and developers that are, are building out the, uh, the, the software and the platforms for the future. I'll be honest, everybody is a digital missionary. You know, it's funny, back in DCN days, we used to talk about how a digital church network was, was a, a group of normies. We, we, we kind of made fun of the name normies, normal people, but we were all about trying to make it for normal people. And really as we're talking about the future of the Church Digital, it's normal people. And, and so we're wanting to get back to this idea of, of reaching the normies. Yeah. I don't know that that's completely normal. Man. Leighton, your spiritual gift is the GIF. Like I, it was funny. I've, I've heard other people talk about how their spiritual gift, uh, gift is centered around being able to share like the right GIF at the right time. I just want to bring attention to that. You are like spot on, man, with, with your, with your GIFs. Like that's, it's, it's incredible. But we're all about normal people. So let me ask, because you all are normies. I'm not, but maybe you are. What best describes you here? Are you an evangelist, a discipler? Or you want to plan a church? Are you interested in building a community for others? Uh, no, no, you're good. You're good, Leighton. Keep, keep it up, man. Influencers, futurists, programmers, developers, like where do you fit into this? What best describes you? Throw it in chat. I want to hear. That GIF has got to be the scariest thing, man. I, uh, I wear, I wear many hats. Flatcap does wear, wear many hats. Uh, Flatcap's great. I admire, he's community, relational. No idea, Ian. Um, future evangelist, discipler, Trizzle, I hear that, see that. Um, yeah, Flatcap does wear many hats. He's, he's got that. That's, that's good, Andy. Good point. Uh, the point is that we, the Church Digital, we want to help you find where you fit. You know, it's, it's interesting. Even Ian saying, hey, I don't know uh, what it is. I'm a, I'm a small town pastor. I'm, I'm wrestling with what being a small town, a small church pastor looks like. Uh, versus doing some other things. And so to that end, I don't, I don't really know what the future holds and what I, I should do and where I fit. And some of what we want to do with the, the Church Digital, we want to help maybe some of you find where you go. So let's start to talk about the mission sending agency approach. Are we still interested in digital discipleship? Well, of, of course we're interested in this digital discipleship. Digital church planting. We definitely still want to do that. Uh, digital evangelism. I mean, shoot, I wrote a book, Sharing Jesus Online. If I was at my office, I would hold up a copy right now and point over my shoulder where there's a bunch in my backdrop. It's, it's huge. Thank you, Dr. John, for writing it with me. Digital ministry. Are we all about innovation? Of course we're still about that. Digital apps, developers. Do we want to see more of that happen and, and help that happen and, and, and get them connected to the front lines of ministry? Yes. All over the place. This is all things that we still want to do through the mission sending agency. And so what does this look like? As a digital mission sending agency, we want to empower people like you with this idea of platform as place. We're taking, and, and maybe it's, it's rude to call it an old fashioned practice, but I, I don't want to parallel that. But we're putting a new spin on a commonly accepted practice. How missions agencies look at China, India, Venezuela, any country on the planet is how we, the Church Digital, how we look at Twitch, Facebook, VR chat, Discord, uh, TikTok, uh, Facebook, uh, WhatsApp, name it, it doesn't, uh, VR chat, uh, Rec Room, name it. That's how we look at it. We look at platforms as places because we're recognizing that within platforms, there's different cultures. And within different cultures, there's different people groups. And within different people groups, there's different ways to reach them. And so we want to start to pivot towards identifying some of these places and empowering people that are called. Can you be called to a platform? Yes. Called to ministry in platforms into digital and empower them to do ministry in those, in those areas. That's a radical concept because as I've talked to other people, they've looked at me puzzled like they think it's okay, but they're not sure. And of course, you know, the Church Digital, rather than asking permission, we're just going to go for it. And so here's the deal. To make this happen, we're getting rid of some of our old framework. Uh, you've heard me say this over and over again, connection, community, discipleship, mobilization, the site, but the connection, community, the people we're connecting with digitally, conferences, uh, social media, blah, blah, blah. We want to get them into a community Discord. And through that, we want to disciple them and lead them to multiplication, multiply. That really struggled for us. And to be honest, the discipleship and the multiplication part was, not that discipleship's bad. I, I want to say upfront, it's not that it was, but the discipleship, really people that were coming to us, they weren't, they weren't asking to be discipled. They were asking for digital ministry frameworks. I mean, literally I had a conversation with the, 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 one of the, the leaders of a globally recognized mission organization that operates in Africa. Um, and, and he says to me, Jeff, I don't want to be discipled. I want you to teach my team how to be digital missionaries. And, and we started really looking not only at the global scale, but within our community, the people that were coming to us and recognizing that we needed to change our framework. We needed to evolve. And so the new framework, connection, community, equipping and mobilization, connection, community, equipping, mobilization. That's the framework of the Church Digital. And, and I would suggest really that's the framework of digital missionaries and anybody that's doing ministry in digital, even, even in physical space. And so let's, let me dig into this. We talked about discipleship. And then we get this phrase, you know, actually I had this conversation with somebody, hey, Jeff, why do you hate multiplication so much? One of, one of our movement leaders asked me this when, when I, I talked to them about the idea. And they said, why do you hate multiplication? Okay. He wasn't kind of rude like that, but Jeff, you were all about multiplication and now it's, it's not on, on the list. What, what, what does this mean? And so to that, Jason Morris, by the way, is, is one of the, uh, no, I'll say it. He's the, he's the, he's the architect of this. He's really pushed us in, in a way with this framework to, to get this to evolve, to be the great fit. And, and he's one that's, that says, Jeff, multiplication is at every level. You're going to multiply at connection. You're going to multiply at community. You're going to multiply at equipping. You're going to multiply at mobilization. It's not that equipping, or excuse me, that multiplication is, is absent. It's everywhere. It's integrated into everything that you're doing. It's the core component of the Church Digital. And so, you know, I've, we've really been wrestling. This is interesting. I don't know if Barbara's on, on yet, but I personally have been wrestling with this, this method of how to communicate the Church Digital. And, and Barbara, early on in the branding, she, she came up with this, um, uh, she came up with this kind of block cross thing that you see in the upper right hand corner. And it had blocks and squares and the Church Digital, instead of having the circle dot like it was before, the earlier brandings were much more rounded. She was like, you know, put that, that square dot in there. And, uh, and then she like created the, the, uh, the, what I'm calling blockheads, these little characters around for, for the Church Digital on the website and a lot of us use it on Discord. And like all of a sudden the pixel became the thing, the square. And it was interesting. As I started thinking about our, our, our process, our, our, our square of trust, would you say, the, the process of using the connect to community to equipping, to mobilizing, mobilizing in that square, all of a sudden, hey, the square of trust may actually be a thing. Trust square, uh, you know, put it in chat if you think that's a horrible label, but the idea, thank you very much. The square all of a sudden became the thing. And it was so interesting. We were all about the square. And, uh, just a quick story. When the website launched, uh, or was, was getting ready to launch. Uh, Barbara's design team shared the, the hero image on the landing page. And it was the, it was the rotating cubes that's on there now, the, the three dimensional squares. And, um, and she shared it to Andy, Andy and I in a, in a meeting. We, I think we were the only two in there for the first meeting. And, uh, to be honest, we hated it. Like I, I don't think I used the words. Andy will, will agree if he's, if he can hear me in chat. We didn't say the word hate, but it was like, yeah, not, not really feeling that at freaking all. Give us something else. And Barbara, it was funny. Barbara, at the next meeting didn't give us something else. And, and, and she, she kind of held her guns and, and we, we, I think it was like a point of, point of contention. Two or three meetings, like we hate this thing. We got to change it. For somehow she convinced, I don't remember what she said, but she convinced us to keep it. But that three dimensional, that angle back, the fact that there's now multiple aspects, that's our movement. That's the multiplication level. The connect to community, to equipping, to mobilizing. That is the Church Digital, wanting to help you recognize your calling, connect to it, understand the community that we have here. Equip you for what God's calling you to do and mobilize you out, but recognize that that's not a two dimensional thing. You will have a ministry and a purpose. You, my friends, are the future of, of the Church Digital. It's not me. It's not Andy. It's not JMo. It's not Leighton. It's not Barbara. It's you. And so your ability to multiply this out, to create that three dimensional trust cube, trust cube. I'm going to keep saying this so much. We're going to make it actual language before it's approved. You're the future of this thing and, and how this will, will roll out. You see, when we look at connection, community, discipleship, uh, equipping, excuse me, connect community, uh, equipping, mobilization. There's, there's two really aspects to it. The come and see, you're going to see the connection of the Church Digital. You're going to connect to us. And then you're going to connect to our community where we build a relationship. And then there's a action aspect. The first is you, I'm saying the word consuming. I need to come up with a better word. There's, there's you digesting. There's you processing. There's you learning. And then the go and do, there's, there's action to that where you are being equipped, you are being mobilized. And then as missionaries out there in the space, in your areas, you are then helping others get connected. You are inviting them into the Church Digital community or your community, whatever works better for you. And then you are equipping and the Church Digital can help. And then you are mobilizing them out and, and helping them find where God is calling them to. And the Church Digital wants to be with you every step of the way. And so I've been teasing this a little bit. There are some massive shifts that are going to be happening at all levels, connection, community, equipping and mobilization. Uh, first off, let me hit on connection. Um, is Barbara in here right now? I, I know there's a lot of, uh, people. I'm not seeing her. She had a meeting. She's not going to be here till after the half hour. I'm going to tease her part. And she'll be available later on to talk about Q and A and stuff like that. There's our, our connection, our, our content strategy. Um, guys, I, I don't know if it's actually, um, ethical to say that we are going to hack YouTube, that we're going to own the algorithm. But if it's possible on God's green earth, we are going to take over YouTube, uh, for the kingdom, but we're going to do it. And so we've already been talking to experts in the field and learning strategies and, and Barbara is, is here, uh, is, is developing a strategy uh, to leverage YouTube moving forward, uh, to get more people exposed to the idea of being digital missionaries. You know, it's interesting, Flatcap, I see this post right now. We are not here to build TCD. We are here to build your ministry calling. It's so good. And, and that's so true. I am not, listen, when I, when I bought the Church Digital in, in 2018, that domain name, uh, I intentionally made a move to not do jeffreed.com. Actually I own jeffreed.org, I think. And I own a whole bunch of dot coms with my name in it. And so it would have been very easy to make this about Jeff. And some of my friends have, but I always knew this would be bigger than me. And, and in many ways, you are, like I said, you're the future of this and your ability to run with this is so important. But we want to make it easier for more people to connect with what are, what we're doing with this community with this idea of, of equipping and mobilizing digital missionaries. And so that's a brief snippet of, of what's happening. Stay tuned. We'll be having more on the connection side. But let's move over to community. Andy, go ahead and hand raise so I can come up, or if you can come up, come up. Um, and let's get you talking a little bit because community, man, we've done an incredible job heading into Discord and launching Discord. Uh, getting 420 some people in here and excited about what's God's going to do soon. But we want to make it it easier for people to get connected into community and, and even to go deeper into the community that we have. And so Andy, take it away.
Absolutely. Thanks Jeff. Uh, and thanks everybody for joining there in, in GIF and Discord land. Um, you know, our Discord server went from zero to 400 in the span of a breath, it feels like. And that's just because y'all have been inviting and really have been pulling people in. And that's great. Uh, it's awesome to see people joining a Discord server, but the Discord server is not the end all be all of community. The end all be all of community is actually you being community together, helping and praying for and, um, and you know, we'll go, we'll do, we'll talk about equipping and mobilization later, but, but the core of it is, is having fun with each other and you know, Leighton in there throwing gifts around, but also other people throwing gifts around and uh, really just being family. You know, a lot of times I think we forget about the familial aspect of ministry. And we just concentrate on, I gotta go do this, and then I gotta do this, and then I gotta talk to this person. And that's great. And those are actual things, but the task is not who you are. The task is not the ministry. The ministry is the ministry and the ministry involves people. And so part of what we want to do with the people of our community is continue to help, I don't know, minister to you. Part of what we exist to do is to yes, equip and send and do the things, but we want to minister to you as well. And so starting within the next couple of weeks, we're really rolling out two different things. Number one, I want to talk briefly, is it okay to talk about short term groups right now, Jeff? Or do we need to hold on to that one just a little bit?
No, no, no. Yeah. Chat, that short term groups is, is great.
Great. Let's talk about our short term groups. So, uh, you all have heard of Bible studies. You've heard of online small groups. You've heard of all of these things and uh, we are actually going to be rolling out our very own system of short term groups. These are groups that are designed around studying books of the Bible and diving in a little bit deeper. Uh, really a, a, a time of refreshing for you who are continually pouring things out. Uh, we have a number of leaders that are, have already been recruited. We are within the next couple of weeks, like I said, working on, uh, methods and systems, modes to get you plugged into a group that's going to be able to meet uh, on your time, in your Discord or in Zoom or wherever, wherever we're going to be meeting. Uh, and it's like I said, designed around refreshing your soul. It's designed around, uh, showing you that this community exists for you and that you are such a vital and huge part of our community. And so you're going to be seeing a whole lot about that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, be sure to check your emails and all of the Discord announcements and everything like that. Um, our, our leaders are excited. I'm excited about the leaders that we have. Uh, a number of them are actually in here right now, I believe. And, uh, that's pretty awesome. And so we're, we're super excited about that. That's the first thing. You want to talk onboarding now, or do you want to save that one as well, Jeff?
Um, you know, I would, we had to stay, uh, Leighton to talk, talk about that here in a little bit. Leighton, you want to go ahead and, uh, come on up as well and join, join that conversation? Uh, while he's coming up, let, let me just tease, if you're interested in groups, uh, Andy, you can stay up here. Um, thechurch.digital/groups. Uh, if somebody can type that link in the chat, that is, that's a page that's open. And so if you're interested in getting connected in, um, in, in one of these groups, we've got seven or eight, uh, group leaders that are already eight, already, already signed up and excited about that. And, uh, I'm sure we're going to get some others in that route. But we want, I mean, the, the deal with community is to be known. Like you can only be uh, loved as much as you are known. And so we want to start to get people known in this space. Um, and to just start to, thank you, Stacy. Uh, to build more of these relationships at a deeper level. So thechurch.digital/groups, you'll hear more about that. Four to six weeks groups, uh, all centered around uh, Bible and discussions with that. But I know Leighton, um, I know you and Andy have been, been working a lot also, you know, Discord can be overwhelming. People are coming into the, the Church Digital and they don't know how to, how to connect and where to go and, and what actually this looks like. And, and so, you know, talk to us a little bit about how we can better onboard and get people connected into the community.
Well, I've done a lot of one-on-ones and that takes a lot of time to do one-on-ones with people, which I love it, by the way. So I'm not going to stop doing any of that stuff. Cause I, I just get a thrill. But not everyone that's coming in knows what other people are doing. And so we're going to have it every other week. The next one is going to be two o'clock on next Thursday, then two weeks later on Thursday. Don't know if that's a permanent schedule. But we're going to have it so that you can sign up, come together, uh, maybe six to eight people in a group. And we're just going to guide you through some questions, helping you to, helping us understand what you're doing. And maybe you don't know what you're doing and that's okay. But we're going to also have one another talking about what have been the things that have gotten in our way? What have been the, our calling to digital? We're going to learn from you, listen to you, and then figure out where we can help you. And it's not just me doing it. It's not just Andy doing it. It's, it's really going to be the whole community coming together to do that. Because I just think that if we've had this momentum building up of people going, God's calling me to digital. I don't know what it looks like. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. But I'm not finding support. And so really the onboarding piece where we're going to do there is to get you more plugged in, get you more connected with other people in the community. And, uh, just have us grow and learn together. So Andy, you want to add anything else to that?
No, I mean, Leighton's spot on. So partly, partly what we want to do is help kind of you figure out your mission and your vision. You know, a lot of times we jump into ministry and we go, man, God told me to do this and I'm ready to go. And you click a few buttons and you start signing up for things. You find the Church Digital and you go, this is great. What do I do next? And part of the what do I do next is going to be sitting with Leighton or I and really kind of talking with other people around you uh, in those ramp sessions. We're calling it the ramp, by the way. Think about a ramp. You know, you're going from here to here. Uh, we want to try to, try to help you figure out that vision and, and really where you can plug in. And more than that, how the Church Digital and how us as your And more than that, how the church digital and how us as your community can help you be seen, known and loved and really be resourced. That's really what we wanna get after. So yeah, Leighton and I are super, super excited about that as well.
Yeah. So for, so excited about this. I will tell you that I had a pastor friend who's digitally savvy. Say to me, "Jeff, you, you're doing so much. It's, it's like trying to get engaged into the church digital. It's like drinking from a fire hydrant. It's, it's just getting bombarded with stuff in Discord and the community. If you're not savvy with that." And, and so it totally can be overwhelming. And that's why we wanna use this, this ramp process, this onboarding to help people get connected into it better and into better understand. And so that we can even help start to tailor their church digital experience within the community and beyond. And so if you are interested in that or more information, I think it's every, what'd you say, every Tuesday, every Thursday? When is it? Every two weeks, every Thursday, every other Thursday, thechurch DIGITAL slash ramp. Thechurch DIGITAL slash ramp. There's a forum on there right now. You can fill it out. We'll follow up with you and, and work towards getting you, you connected. And both of these pages are, are active on, on the website. So hey, you guys, thanks. Appreciate it. Anything else before you disappear? Awesome. Hey, and so I'm glad the internet's holding up. That's, that's impressive because my parents aren't power users. Hey, now recognize here, as we're building this out, what we're actually doing is this is a digital missionary framework. This is the framework that, that as a digital missionary you'll be using. Come and see, you're connecting with people. This would either be you creating evangelism, doing evangelism via content or through the engagement, the relationships that you have digitally, inviting them into the community. And within the community, you're doing relational evangelism there as well. And all that feeds into this idea of going and doing where now that you have the relationship, now that you've used the circle, the, excuse me, the square of trust, Barbara, I kinda like that. The square of trust going, now you can get towards bringing them to Christ and eventually equipping and mobilizing them on a multiplication journey as well. And so this process, not only, it was so funny, the same pastor friend, he said to me the other, "Trust the process." The pastor friend said to me, he's, he's one of the group leaders that we've gotten. When I invited him to be a group leader, he's like, "You know what, Jeff? It's like what you're doing digitally. It's like you're a church." I love it when people say that. I was like, "Yeah, we're running the exact same playbook, the exact same model that you should be running in your digital church or in your digital ministry." And so we wanna help you start to apply this through, which is where we wanna get into equipping. And we ran a little long on time. I'm disappointed. I really wanted JMo to share a little bit here. I have been spending my Saturdays, I don't know, for the past three weeks, hanging out with JMo on, on Google Meet, talking about equipping and dreaming about how we can equip digital missionaries. And, you know, I'll go ahead and share this slide. This is JMo's plan for equipping digital missionaries. We are actually launching a course, Equipping Digital Missionaries. Like, you know, the abbreviation, you know, I love abbreviations. Abbreviation is EDM. I got my, I got my techno music. If, if I was in, thank you for queuing that up, Leighton, he was ready. If I was in my office, I had, I had a little button on, on my, on my stream deck. It was gonna kind of bust out some, some, nope. Not happening, sorry. But literally this EDM is a 13-week course on digital missiology. We've got four videos a week, five minutes apiece, over 50 videos tailored to equip you to be a digital missionary. Though it's gonna be a weekly synchronous huddle that's gonna meet in Google Meet, asynchronous discussion and resources that'll be available in a, in a private TCD Discord channel. We're gonna offer this course centrally within TCD three times a year, taught by TCD leaders. And then we've got movement leaders and volunteers that'll be teaching that in their own context outside of the church digital. You can look at the sessions here. Here's just an overview of, of what the sessions are. Not bound by time, not bound by place, some of the platforms, that's the culture, the cultural implications of the platforms, contextualization, digital culture and models, imperialism, which is gonna be fascinating, mental health, APAS, accountability structure. A lot of this is gonna be led by TCD and also by people, specialists that are out in the field doing this. And I'm so excited, so excited to see this happen. So here's what I can tell you. And this is a secret, totally a team effort, totally 100%. Like this is, this is not just JMo. We, dude, I got, I saw Megan's in the room. I asked Megan to, to design the mental health one. She sent me a, a PDF last night of her design. It was literally a three-page, three freaking page PDF laying out the, the full intensity of, of what it needed to be, the people that she wanted to speak at it, the topics, outlines, like it was freaking beautiful. And so Megan, thank you for that. But 100% team effort going, going through on this. Here's the reality, we're starting this in, yeah, I'll say it, we're gonna beta, shh, don't, don't tell anybody. It's just, it's just you. We're gonna beta this in, in October, like next month. Thing's not even built yet. It's gonna be, do, building the plane while it's flying. You know, literally JMo and I are spending about 15 hours on a plane flying to Africa, to, to Korea here in a, in a couple of days, in next week. And we may be spending the time talking about EDM the entire time. But if you are interesting, interested in helping us beta the course, to go through it for the first time and help us make it better, I want you to go to, and somebody put this in chat. I don't know that I've got a slide. I don't have a slide, thechurch DIGITAL slash EDM. Thechurch DIGITAL slash EDM. Somebody put that in chat for me and click on that. You can sign up. We will put a limit on this, first come, first served. Ian, you always type HTTP to make it clickable. That's a rookie mistake, bro. Learn that one. There you go. HTTPS always gives you the thing. I'm always lazy. I never put the S, but very good. We, uh, thank you Ian for the edit. That's even better. First come, first served. If you're interested in being part of the beta group, come in. I don't know how big the beta group's gonna be, but we, we need your help. So I would love your insight on that. Number four is mobilization. And, and let me, let me get through this one. We got to the place where we started recognizing that we needed to empower others in the space. I am, I'm confession hour in the church digital. I wrote a book on virtual reality churches, okay? I am not the expert on virtual reality. I'm a sham. I don't know. I, I don't put up, my headset's broken right now. The, the fact is, is that I don't know really that much about virtual reality. I know people that know virtual reality. And so the book that I wrote on virtual reality was really telling the stories. And if you actually read the book, it's like, I don't know, 27 stories, 27 people were, were contributing authors in, in that book. It was, it was, it was beautiful to see how it came together. But for the church digital to scale, it's not about Jeff Reed. Cause Jeff Reed's 47 years old and Jeff Reed has limitations in life. And so it needed to be bigger. It needed to be better than Jeff Reed. And to do that, we had to start to empower others to, to pick this up and, and to do this. And so we wanted to create outposts. Now, what's an outpost? I actually asked Google Gemini, the slide's been up on the screen, so you know, what's an outpost? An outpost is a, is a facility in space or time or on a planet that can be used for a variety of purposes, including scientific research, commercial, commercial operation, exploration, blah, blah, blah. It's so funny. I'm addicted right now. Oh my gosh. What's the, um, what's the game that's based on Fallout? That it's, it's the, it's the tower game that's, that's on the iOS and it's on PS5, I know as well. I'm it, cause it's, um, but it's, it's designed for like you're designing outposts. And, and I am, Fallout Shelter, thank you. I am addicted to that game. Why? Because I'm so addicted to this, this idea of outpost and starting to create these, uh, these research centers. But here's, here's what we, you know, we start to Google and explore what outpost looks like. And, and you know, Google Images gives me this, this idea of, you know, something on, on a foreign planet where we're, we're, we're connecting, we're doing research or, or we're, we're in the, and, and you're having to be indoors doing the research because it's, it's hostile territory outside. Or you're in an Indian hut where you're able to explore more, but you need resources and, and, and the meeting space of the building and the shelter to come in. Or you're, you're in a, in a, in a snow place where it's, it's crazy and you're, you're, you're trying to learn more about the space, but you, you need the warmth to survive in, in the space and to be encouraged. And so we've really started to wrestle with, what would this outpost model? What would this look like in, in platforms as places? If we looked at platforms as places, how can we empower and, and, and start to multiply more digital missionaries in these spaces? And this is what we came up with. We need our outpost to encourage digital missionaries, to be willing to explore new platforms and, and new ways and, and new depths, to be able to experiment with new techniques and new processes and to empower kingdom wins. Kingdom wins, not, not the church digital wins, not individual wins, but kingdom wins. Empower others to do ministry digitally. This is the secret sauce. Thank you, Flacap. He's literally preaching via GIF right now. This is the secret. It's, it's not self-centered, it's self-less centered. And this goes counterculture to Twitch streamers, to, to Instagram followers. Like it's all about amassing the biggest group possible. And, and, and the church digital has always had this process. I've, I've always believed this. We talked about this even back pre-COVID days. Is it better to have a million-person church or 100,000 churches of 10? And it's funny, I was actually offered a job to be the digital pastor for a church whose goal was to be a million-person church. They literally came to me and said, "We wanna be the first million-person church in, on the planet. And, and we want you to be our digital pastor." And yeah, I got to tell them, "No." I kinda laughed at them when they asked, uh, cause I think that's a horrible idea. But if we can empower others and if we can multiply, which offers contextualization? Oh my gosh, this is the future of multiplication and mobilization. TCD, we wanna mobilize people like you into a platform or a place outpost where they can explore, experiment and be empowered to do ministry. Platform, my friend Ryan Sidholm, Sidholm as an example, is running Metaverse mission trips where he is taking people literally into the metaverse to share Jesus. And so we wanna empower and send others to learn about the metaverse to Ryan. And so that Ryan, in what Ryan's ministry can empower others to, to do that. And if they stay with Ryan's ministry at the Metaverse mission trips, that's awesome. If they start doing their own thing, they start a Metaverse church, that's a kingdom win, baby. That's what we're trying to do. So platforms is a big win here. Another example would be our place outpost. And, and Simon Dirks is a great example of that. He's in Germany. You've heard me talk about him. He may actually be in there. I don't see him on the screen right now. But Simon wants to reach Germany via digital church methods. And so he created Beta Church as a church, a, a digital church. But he also started Cloud Kirsh, which is the example of a, a cloud church network. It's, it's a digital church network that exists to reach German people. And so he's got German churches. But what's interesting, as this come up, we, I started feeding him like contacts in Austria and contacts in Eastern Europe and, and other people to talk to, to, to learn that are in that European context. And all of a sudden, he has become a place outpost, doing ministry and training and mobilizing of people that are in the European context. Now, we obviously wanna contextualize as much as possible, but Simon to do that initial engagement is incredible. And we wanna see that continue. We wanna meet and start to mobilize more Simon's. Looking in the room right now, there's a couple of you that have the capacity of being Simon right now to even have a global impact, a countrywide impact, a platform-wide impact, a, a contextual, cultural impact on a people group today via digital tools. And I wanna challenge some of you to maybe step up into that. We had a problem, and I, I don't spend too much time on this, with Stacy. Stacy naps in here. And so here's some of you that are like, "Hey, this is great. I, I don't, I don't wanna be planting a church. I, I don't know where I fit in. I'm, I'm a, I'm a specialist on a particular area." Stacy is incredible. Some of the work that she's doing on grief, a grief care and dealing with people in crisis is, is beautiful. Coming out of crisis. But she's not a church and, and, and she does have some missionary impact, but not quite like this movement level stuff that we're doing. And so we've came up with this other process, and this is new, screaming Stacy from the rooftops of being a subject matter expert, SME. Some of you are specialists on a particular area. Megan Carter's another example of that. The work that she's doing in mental health is beautiful. And the season that I just wrapped up with the TCD podcast with her, we created some incredible resources for churches and, and church planters and digital missionaries to better understand digital and mental health contexts. And so we wanna start to platform some subject matter experts to help us connect with more people up at the top. But as we get deeper down the, the, the trust square, to engage more with people, to be able to even help and empower our movement leaders, our outposts in what they're doing and to be on call with them. And so our SMEs, our SMEs, subject matter experts will coach our outpost leaders and connect the church digital with a, with a wider audience and empowering their own ministry to, to grow as well. And so here's just a quick overview. Outpost will encourage ministry that are gonna explore new aspects. They're gonna experiment with new techniques and they're gonna empower ministry, kingdom over castle. SMEs are gonna be more representing a specialized area, providing ongoing support. They're gonna be on standby for outpost leaders dealing with crisis and to be a service provider by representing the niche area across TCD communities. I'm tired. I've been talking for 40 some minutes and it's been exhausting getting into this point. There's one freaking more thing that I really wanna say, but I'm not. Literally the past 24 hours has been, um, surprising. And there's another aspect of the church digital that, that we're gonna roll out, but not today. I'm totally doing the, the Steve Jobs. I'm not gonna say it. I promise you, we will say this before Korea, the 20th, when I get on a plane. I'm hoping we can get our ducks in a row before I get on the plane. But I, I, I wanna make sure we launch strong into the one more thing. Guys, we're on the cusp of seeing God do something. God's already done something big. You know, it's funny, Barbara wasn't here for the beginning of the meeting. JMo had to leave. I have to leave right at two. We're all bivocational. Like this is not nobody's full-time job. I, I, I wish it would be a full-time job for me, but it's not. And so we've, I say that to say God is doing some incredible things with the fractional pieces that we're putting together. And when I say that this is a God thing, it's a God thing. What's your next step? Do you need to connect with our onboarding? Do you need to find a group? Do you, are you interested in learning more about being a digital missionary specifically and starting that journey? Or are you in the place where you wanna start to help others understand that journey? In the slide deck, we talked about it. Onboarding is slash ramp, the church digital slash ramp. Groups is slash groups. EDM is slash EDM. And outposts, have a conversation with me on that. And ultimately, we need to get you through that EDM course to train you so that you can train others. The EDM is training to train, we're training the trainers to train others in, in that process. But that's where we are. If you're interested in the slide deck, you can zap that QR code. Go the, the church DIGITAL slash town hall is the URL as well. And you can download the slide deck there. We will get the videos in place as soon as possible. Let's go and do this for the nine minutes that's left. Let's get the leadership to come up. I vomited a lot of words quickly and I appreciate your, your grace as we've been navigating it for that. Hey, White Bear, thanks for stumbling in. But come on, Barbara, if you're in, I know JMo had to take off. But what, um, what questions do you all have? I, I know we've been talking a lot. Throw it in chat or feel free to raise hand. I don't mind bringing you up on stage either. Have I never said vomited words before? That's like one of my sayings. It's like, um, yeah, the, the, the actual word is, is logorrhea. L-O-G-O-R-R-H-E-A. Yeah, it's vomiting words. You're welcome for that. Barbara, as, as we're stalling for questions, I talked a little bit about connection, about and how we're gonna. Uh, Barbara, as, as we're stalling for questions, um, I talked a little bit about connection about, and how we're going to like, if we can legally hack YouTube, we're going to figure out how to, but we're going to own that platform, uh, for, for the kingdom. Do you want to maybe talk a little bit about connection and which, what we've got in store?
Uh, for sure. Yeah, we, I, I like that expression. We're gonna, we're gonna utilize the algorithm in our advantage as much as we can. But, uh, the goal is simply to, um, utilize the technology that is available to us to be more visible. So we're working on our visibility game, uh, and reaching, uh, you know, presenting ourselves to those that are already looking for us. I believe there's a bunch of us out there. They're praying and asking for something like this to be available to them. And so our goal is simply to, to make it visible. Yeah.
Love it. I'm, I'm totally focusing on the word vomit Jif right now. Uh, I don't, I don't know that I can pull my eyes away from it at this moment. You're, Leighton, you're so freaking good, man. Uh, you are, you are an untapped resource in Jif land. Um, any other, right? With the, with the hat. He's got the hat. Oh my gosh, it's so good. Um, Andy, Leighton, any other thoughts as, as we're wrapping up this today?
I, I think one of the things is that we didn't come here and get to this place because one person had an idea. We didn't get here into this place because the five of us in leadership came to this place. This has been lots of conversation over several years, talking through things, listening to what's going on in our community, looking at what's going on in the digital space and prayer and saying, Holy Spirit, what are we supposed to be doing? And responding to that leading nudging, responding to what we're hearing from the needs in the community, which is why we've got one more thing, because we're constantly listening. It's not, this is Jeff and Jeff's idea. This isn't TCD leadership and our idea. This is the kingdom. And, uh, I've, oh my goodness, I am, I keep telling my wife and she doesn't understand, like, I am more excited than I've ever been in ministry. And I'm also at the same time more terrified than I've ever been a failure. And it is so much fun. It is so much fun. I just, I, I just can't wait to see what 20 years from now is going to be. But we have to live it out and we're right at the beginning of that.
What, what's the saying? Failure is just one step closer to success. And so, uh, love that. By the way, I, I mean, I'll echo what he said. We are, um, had a meeting yesterday with several of our high-level, our movement leaders and, um, uh, all three of them equivalently said, Jeff, we need the church digital to do this. And, uh, it's more work. I don't know how we're going to do it. It's a giant headache. Uh, but it's a kingdom win. And so, okay. And I can't wait to roll it out. It's going to be awesome. Um, I was, I was all set to you. I was going to say it. Barbara's like, no, we got to get it set up first. Uh, I, she's right. We have to. And so we, I know, I need it. It's, it's just, I was so relieved. There's, there's, there's one more, there's one more thing this year. And there's some massive stuff coming in 25 that is, and so stay tuned. Um, I, I think, I think God is going to do something incredible, um, through the faithfulness of, of these leaders and, and through the faithfulness of, of you and some of the watching and those on, on the church digital, like, um, we all know and we've all seen God move in this space. And, and the more that we are able to, to show that fruit, to share that fruit and encourage each other's, the more that this idea will spread. And so I want to encourage you in the work that you're doing to keep going, to keep doing, uh, what you're doing and, and moving this idea forward. And so, um, love you all for that. As we're, as we're landing the plane here, is there anything else? Andy, you good? And he, and he wraps up with a you can do it Jif from Happy Gilmore. Is that Waterboy? That's not Happy Gilmore. Oh, you're right. Dang it. Dang it. Waterboy. It's at all, I mean, it's Adam Sandler movies with, uh, what's that, what's that guy's name? I, I, it's the guy that's in every Adam Sandler movie. Rob Snyder, who was in the, in the, 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 anyway. He's in everything. All right. Happy Gilmore was the better movie. Bob Barker. And then, all right. Hey, I'm going to land the plane before we start reliving happy, uh, you know, Adam Sandler movies. Cause you know, ain't got time for that. Thank you, Leighton. My man. Hey, we are, we're going to do an after-party. If you're like, what the crap was that? Or if you just want to hang out and hit talk, um, Leighton is, is going to be hanging out in the after-party, which is, which is what room, Leighton? Uh, it's, what's it called? Office hours, uh, open office? Yeah. Live office hours. He's going to be hanging out right there. And so feel free to talk, jump on, engage with him on camera. I know I've got a meeting. I've got a, I've got a split for Barbara's got a meeting. Andy's got a meeting. And so we've got a, we've got to jet into other things, but feel free to hang out with Leighton. And, um, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to reach out, stay tuned and be praying for the church digital as we're heading to Korea and, and beyond that God, um, well, honestly, that God does stuff that only God can do. Cause if this, we're, we're operating well beyond the stuff that Jeff can do at this point. And so, um, let, let God keep doing what God's doing. Okay?